Okay, Mr. Marshall. We have the attendees are coming on in. Amherst Media is here with us. I see 6:33. You have a quorum. You look good to go.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Happy New Year, everyone. Welcome to Amherst Planning Board Meeting of January 8th, 2025. My, my name is Doug Marshall and as Chair of the Amherst Planning Board, I am calling this meeting to order at 6:33 PM. This meeting is being recorded and is available livestream via Amherst Media. Minutes are being taken. Pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021 and extended by Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, this planning board meeting, including public hearings, will be conducted via remote means using the Zoom platform. The Zoom meeting link is avail or is accessible on the meeting agenda posted on the town website's calendar listing for this meeting. Or go to the planning board webpage and click on the most recent agenda where the Zoom link is listed at the top of the page. No in-person attendance of the public is permitted. However, every effort will be made to ensure the public can adequately access the meeting in real time via technological means. In the event we are unable to do so for reasons of economic hardship or despite best efforts, we will post an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting on the town's website. Board members, I will take a roll call. When I call your name, unmute yourself, answer affirmatively, and return to mute. Bruce Golden.
I am here.
Fred Hartwell.
I am here.
Lawrence Klaas.
I am here.
Jesse Major.
Present.
Hi Doug Marshall and present. Johanna Newman.
I'm here.
And we are told that Karen Winter is not attending tonight, so she is absent. Board members, if technical issues arise, we may need to pause to fix the problem and then continue the meeting. If the discussion needs to pause, it will be noted in the minutes. Please use the raise hand function to ask a question or make a comment, and I will call on you to speak. After speaking, remember to remute yourself. To the general public, the general public comment item is reserved for public comment regarding items not on tonight's agenda. Please be aware, the board will not respond to comments during general public comment period. Public comment may also be heard at other times during the meeting as deemed appropriate by the planning board chair. Please indicate you wish to make a comment by clicking the raise hand button when public comment is solicited. If you have joined the Zoom meeting using a telephone, please indicate you wish to make a comment by pressing star nine on your phone. When called on, please identify yourself by stating your full name and address and put yourself back into mute when finished speaking. Residents can express their views for up to three minutes or at the discretion of the planning board chair. If the speaker, excuse me, does not comply with these guidelines or exceeds their allotted time, their participation may be cut off from the meeting. All right, time is 6:37 and we'll start off with the minutes. We had minutes from Jan, from November 6th included in our packet. I hope everybody had a chance to look those over. Does anybody have any comments on those minutes? Johanna?
Don't have comments. I was going to move to approve the minutes from the meeting.
All right. Did anyone else have comments? All right, Johanna, you want to go ahead and move that we accept?
Sounds great.
And a second, looks like Jesse is gesturing as a second.
A second.
All right. One last call for any comments from the board on these minutes drafted. Okay. Bruce.
I was not at the meeting. I'll abstain.
All right, thank you. Fred?
I go, hi.
Thank you. Lawrence?
Hi.
Jesse?
Hi.
Johanna?
Hi.
And I'm an I as well. That's five in favor, one abstention, and one absence. Great, thank you. So time is now 6:38 and we'll go to the public comment period. So, members of the public, this is the time of the, of our meeting when you can make comments about items that do not appear later on our agenda. So if you have any comments, please raise your hands. I usually also read the names of the attendees at this point so that the members of the public know who else is listening. So at the moment, I only see four, four names. One is Carol Heim. A second is Ed O'Keefe. The third is Mara Keen, and the fourth is Tom Reedy. I still do not see any hands raised from the public. So I will linger on this for a few more seconds and then we will move on. Okay, all right, so I do not see any comments from the public. We will move on to our third item on the agenda. This is a continuation of a public hearing. Actually, before I start this, Pam, did we advertise this for 6:35?
We did.
Okay, so it's, we have passed that moment in time and it's okay for us to restart this or continue this hearing at this point. All right, so this is a public hearing continued from December 4th of last year. In accordance with the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 48, this public hearing has been duly advertised and notice thereof has been posted and is being held for the purpose of providing the opportunity for interested citizens to be heard regarding SUB 2025-02, U Drive Amity LLC, which is a project at University Drive at Amity Street. As I said before, it's been continued from December 4th. It's requesting approval for a three lot preliminary subdivision plan under Mass General Law, Chapter 41, Sections 81L and 81S. Parcel is located on map 13B, parcels 18, 27, 28, and 54B. All in the RD, all in the BL and RD zoning district. So that last parcel was 54, not 54B. Do we have any board member disclosure for this hearing? I do not see any. And in that case, I see that Tom Reedy's been added to our panel for this hearing. Welcome, Tom. And go ahead with your introduction as the applicant.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, Members of the Board, Tom Reedy, Attorney with Bacon Wilson out of Amherst, here on behalf of U Drive Amity and its application, as the chairman noted, for a preliminary subdivision plan for the corner of University Drive and Amity Street. This is, and I think planning staff has always did a tremendous job in their memorandum. This is for a zone freeze. And so we had started, you know, a little bit of background. This is Barry Roberts' project, started the design of the mixed-use development prior to the discussions about the overlay district and has progressed. And so what we wanted to do was freeze the zoning so that we knew the rules that we were playing by. If it turns out that we can comply with whatever Town Council ultimately passes, then we're not going to need to go to a definitive subdivision plan. However, if we're not able to, then we'll go to a definitive subdivision plan so that we're able to free zoning to prior to that Town Council's enactment of the overlay district. You might recall, we do have a variance from the Zoning Board of Appeals that allows the project to go to five stories. So it's really just out of an abundance of caution, given the, the real money that Barry has spent to design this project so that he doesn't get to the one yard line and then all of a sudden, the project's not viable because the Town Council has passed a bylaw that just makes it economically infeasible. So that's what we're here for. I'll go through the process because obviously that's what we've got to do for the preliminary plan. We have agreed to extend your decision-making to January 31st. There is really no action that we can take whether you approve it or deny it. Our, our clock really starts from the, the date that we submit it. We have seven months to submit the definitive plan. Given that the, the Town Council has not approved the overlay district yet, we could refile this preliminary plan instead of spending the money to go through a definitive plan just to buy ourselves another seven months to see where that zoning bylaw comes out. So again, just transparency, this is more technical than anything else. But again, I'll, I'll go through the, the process. So I will share my, so that you can see the subdivision plan. If you're all able to see it, it's a three lot subdivision towards the page bottom. You've got University Drive. Page right, you've got Amity Street. North is towards the right here. Three lots, one, two, and three, moving from east to west. You've got a cul-de-sac here. You've got a sidewalk at, at, within the cul-de-sac or within the roadway, within that right-of-way. Lot two is being, the, the lot itself has no frontage other than this subdivision road. So anytime I'm looking to do this with clients, it's always to make sure that at least one lot is being created as a result of that's, that subdivision road, which is what's happening here. Lot three has access on Amity Street. Lot one has access on Amity and University Drive. Otherwise, we believe we comply with the requirements for a preliminary plan under state and, you know, state law of 4181L and then local regulation. I know one of the comments in the memo was you don't have proposed topography or elevations, contour lines for this road. If we do go to the definitive plan, we of course would provide more detail of what this road would look like, likely a profile plan as well. And I think that's kind of what we have here generally, but I'm happy to answer any questions about this specifically or even kind of bigger picture project if you want to get into it.
Okay, thank you, Tom. I would, I get, at this point, I'd like to call on Chris. Chris, we have your memo in the packet that was recently revised. Are there revisions that you'd like to highlight for us?
Thank you. I think Mr. Reedy covered most of it. He talked about the plans that are being developed. They're undergoing changes, and I think you already are aware of some of that. That, that's, that is the plans for the real development, not the subdivision development. And I guess I should have introduced myself. I'm Chris Brestrop, one of the planners. The variance is not relevant to the subdivision because we're not proposing any buildings here. It seems that the only preliminary subdivision plan requirement that wasn't met as far as I was concerned was that the proposed topography wasn't shown on the proposed roadway. So you might want to grant a waiver from that if you so choose, a waiver for that for the preliminary subdivision plan. And then I think that was the only thing that wasn't shown as we would have expected or we would have wanted. And then I think you might want to also vote on the extension of the time in which you have to file your decision. The, the original application was filed with the town clerk on November 15th. And so you had 45 days in which to render a decision and file it with the town clerk. And then 45 days ended on, I think it was December 30th, but in the meantime, the applicant asked for a continuation of the public hearing to tonight. So that meant, of course, that you couldn't meet the December 30th deadline. And now that we're here on January 8th, if you decide to vote to approve this preliminary subdivision plan, we've asked the applicant to give you an extension to January 31st to, to render your decision and file it with the town clerk. So I think it might be a good idea for you to vote on that extension. The applicant has said that they would agree to that, but I think it's, it's a good idea for you to agree to it as well. So my opinion is that you would vote on the waiver from the requirement for the proposed topography and vote on the extension of the time in which you have to file your decision.
Okay, well, I'm also noticing at the end of your memo, you had listed four items, issues to consider. The first one was, is this a subdivision plan for residential subdivision or a non-residential subdivision? Chris, what is the, what are the implications of that distinction?
When you get into the definitive subdivision plan, there are requirements for residential subdivision and requirements for a non-residential subdivision. So it's good for us to know now in case the applicant does file a definitive plan, whether he considers this a residential subdivision or a non-residential subdivision.
Okay, Tom, do you know the answer to that?
I, I don't because I'd want to look at what the requirements are for, for the residential versus non-residential, and then I think I'd make my decision then, so.
At this point, it's probably not, you know, too important, but at the definitive subdivision plan stage, it would be important.
Yeah, we'll, we'll certainly have, you know, kind of a more complete package and answer if we do proceed with a definitive.
Okay. This, the next issue had to do with stormwater management. It doesn't appear you've addressed that on this plan.
No, we, we haven't. I think, I mean, as a subdivision, right, so that's the lens that we're looking at this. Typically, what happens is that you design the stormwater system to take the runoff from the roadway itself. And then you leave the lots to whatever the use is going to be and the permitting path that they have to go through. So if it was residential strictly, because one of the things I want to talk to Chris about is mixed use, does that residential or is that non-residential? We don't have to talk about that now. But my, my bigger point is each of the individual lots typically deals with their stormwater separately. So we would look to, I mean, comply with Massachusetts stormwater standards. I know, you know, just from the, the project that we're actually doing, catch basins and then conveying that into detention basins or, or rain gardens and then having those meander to the west towards the wetlands.
Okay. Chris, I see your hand, and I guess my question in addition to for you is do, does the preliminary plan have to have information on stormwater?
The preliminary plan is supposed to have a general idea of how the stormwater for the roadway will be handled. There are catch basins shown on this plan, and I believe there's an outfall. It's a very small plan on the screen here, so it's, it's hard to see. But I did note that there are catch basins and they seem to drain off into a southwestern direction.
Yeah, over in this area is an existing drainage basin. You can see here, and then there's a drainage swill here, and then everything moves to the west based on the topography. There's a catch basin here, here, and it's looking to connect to the town system here. I think that's for this area.
Okay, all right, so it looks like that probably meets the the basic requirement for this at this point in design. All right, your third issue was, will the planning board grant the waivers for the submittal requirements? I guess that's the topo absence. And then if the preliminary subdivision plan is approved, what conditions, if any, should be placed on the approval? I don't recall you recommending any conditions, Chris. Is that so?
I didn't recommend any conditions, but I thought that as long as we were talking about it, that we should require that the definitive subdivision plans show all of the things that are required in the rules and regulations governing the subdivision plan for the definitive subdivision plan, or else the applicant should ask for a waiver. And then the patient should at least address the issues that are outlined in the transmission, transmission from the fire department. But the fire department didn't really have much to go on here other than the roadway, but they did list some of the things that they will be looking for in the definitive subdivision plan. And I think that that would be, that would be a good idea for the, for the applicant to make sure that he addresses all of those issues. Whether or not he complies with them, if he doesn't comply with them, he should have a reason as to why he's not complying. Because the idea is to address those issues. So I just had those, those two conditions. Comply with the requirements of the definitive subdivision plan or ask for a waiver, waivers, and then address the issues outlined in the fire department's transmitter.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I didn't have those written up.
That's fine. Okay. Board members, any comments or questions on this subdivision plan and Mr. Reedy's presentation? All right, I don't see any hands from board members. At this point, I'm going to ask if there's any public comment from the public. We have maybe one more person than we had before, two more people. So this is the time to offer comments on this preliminary subdivision plan as, as submitted for the parcel at University Drive and Amity Place as a way of freezing the zoning. Like my camera keeps getting out of focus, so that's why I turned it off and back on. Anyway, so despite that delay in finishing the sentence, it looks like we still don't have any hands from the public. So I'm going to conclude that we have, don't, don't have public comment. Johanna, are you ready to say something?
I am ready to say something, if I may. Sorry, I missed my prompt earlier. Just to be clear, it is not the intention of the applicant to actually build what is seen on these drawings. I think we've seen a couple of scenarios like this in the past. It's really just because you need something so that you can freeze the zoning.
A hundred percent correct. Yeah, we'll be back, and this is probably a good opportunity because I wanted to bring it up. We're finalizing those plans, you know, we were before you and we advanced the plans to a stage that we're going to be submitting probably next week. And so, Chris, one of the things I wanted to mention to you is I don't know if that's going to give you enough time for real review before the next meeting. So whether we want to have it then or continue it to February, if it's up to me, I say we have it anyways just to at least talk about it. And then if there are some issues that we should address, we can get that. So hopefully, because this is, you know, Barry's looking to start building this yesterday. And so he's looking for an August 2026 delivery. So we're on a little bit of a tight timeline. And so, yeah, we've advanced the plans. I think you're going to like it. We weren't able to go all the way down because of site circulation, and there's an easement that we can't interfere with. But yes, there is no intention to actually build this, what you see on the plan. It's to build a single mixed-use building with 77 units.
And yet, at the same time, we've also been advised in the past to, you know, do our due diligence and make sure that it is consistent with the rules and regulations and bylaws of the town of Amherst. So appreciate it.
Yep. Okay, Chris, your hand is up.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask Mr. Reedy if he's planning to submit the plans next week for consideration on the January 22nd meeting date. It would be helpful to have them, you know, early to midweek rather than at the end of the week.
That's the, I'm, I'm pushing the engineer, I'm pushing. We, we have the architecturals, we have the floor plans, it's just the engineer. He has his grading plan. So we will have something, you know, at some point early next week, I may say, let's just submit what we have and then supplement. So you've got something to, to go off of. But yeah, noted, we'll get it to you maybe like, I'll probably put a deadline of Tuesday, maybe Wednesday, midday to get you something. Whatever it is that we have. Tuesday?
Tuesday.
Is that what you're saying? Okay.
Yes, please, thank you.
We'll get you something Tuesday.
Thank you.
Pam's in charge.
Right.
That's right.
Okay. Any other comments from the board? Okay. So I'm going to sort of verbally try to parse out a, a motion or two. So we have the extension for the filing date. We have the waiver of the topo. We have the conditions, the two conditions for the definitive subdivision plan to include it, everything required or obtain a waiver from the board and to respond either by complying or I guess explaining why not with the Amherst Fire Department requirements. And then we will eventually close the hearing as the final part of this. So did we, do we have any findings? I guess we, our finding would be that we find this, this plan complies with the relevant parts of the zoning code with the exception of the topo, which is, is we, we, we grant a waiver. So Chris and Pam, would you like me to try to package that into one big motion or, or split it into several?
I think you already just kind of packaged it into one big motion.
Well, I'm just trying to kind of get my head together before I have to do something else.
Yeah, the only thing that you didn't actually say is to approve with all of this.
Yeah. Okay.
And I would also suggest that you include the rules and regulations governing the subdivision of land along with the zoning code. That you are saying complies with the relevant parts of the zoning code and also complies with the relevant parts of the rules and regulations governing the subdivision of land.
Okay. All right, in that case, why don't I? I guess I need to say this all again. Do I need to do that? Or have we kind of collected in your notes the full inventory of all these items?
Yes.
Okay. All right, good. In that case, does somebody want to move and second? Jesse?
I'll move what, what Doug said.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right, Lawrence, thank you. Thanks for jumping on that. Okay, everybody. Let's go ahead and run through the roll call here. Just for fun, I'll start with Johanna.
Hi.
Thank you, Jesse.
Hi.
Lawrence?
Hi.
Brad?
Hi.
And Bruce?
Hi.
I'm an I as well. That's six in favor, one absence.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Mr. Reedy. I guess we'll see you at the next meeting.
Yes.
Okay, Bruce? Bruce, you're muted. Your hand is up.
Doug, can I ask Chris?
Doug, can I ask Chris a question about this process?
Absolutely.
I understand that, and actually, Tom's being here still is probably good, so Tom, don't go away unless I'm cut off, which it might be in order to do so, but anyway, I think you know that this is a very frustrating, I found this frustrating the other time we did it with the solar overlay and so forth. So as I understand it, there's essentially what we're trying to do, and it seems entirely reasonable, is to freeze the zoning when there's an impending change in the zoning for a development there where the developer is investing considerable resources. So it seems entirely reasonable that this should be done. What I find peculiar about this and frankly frustrating is that the process we use to freeze this is this zoning overlay thing, which involves staff time doing all what Chris has done. I notice that we're expecting to, we've got the fire department chiming in on this and writing stuff, perhaps the engineer, and then after all that's done, we've got seven citizens who sit here and spend their time doing something that frankly I didn't sign up to do. This seems to be, it's very frustrating. So my question, Chris, is, is there not a way in which this could be, and we would have to probably make some particular rule and regulation about this, but shouldn't towns, shouldn't shouldn't towns reasonably do this as an administrative task with the zoning commissioner? Asked to make a decision about this, that Tom and Barry would come in, they would put their case explaining that there was a reasonable case to be made here and that the zoning commissioner is empowered to make that decision, and if the zoning commissioner makes a decision that Tom and his clients are not happy with, then they can appeal in some process, but it, there's so much time and effort that's been invested in this potentially that is could be so much better used. It just, it just, it just seems to be that there's got to be a better way of doing this, and why am I wrong?
All right, Bruce, go ahead, Chris. Bruce, that was a minute I'm never going to get back.
There is a section of Chapter 41A that provides this this, I'm not sure what to call it.
This vehicle.
Vehicle for freezing zoning, and I think because it is a state law, we don't have the ability to change it, so we really need to comply with it and follow it. And that's what we're trying to do, and the more we do it, the better we get, so hopefully, we won't have to do it too many more times, but.
Yeah, I mean, wouldn't we need to petition the legislature to change the law to find some other way to do this?
Yes, and that would probably just be for Amherst unless all the other towns in Massachusetts wanted to jump on board, or unless the state legislature thought that it was better not to have to go through this process.
Okay. Tom, do you have any other perspective on that?
No, I mean, it's, Bruce hit the nail on the head. I mean, I always frankly feel bad filing these because I know the the time and effort that goes into it on everybody's part. I guess the only, and Chris is right, right, 48th Section 6 allows this, and then you go through 4181, which is a subdivision statute that says this is how you do it, and like, when I do this in adversarial projects, there's very, you know, you submit to the planning board, you submit to the town clerk, you submit to the Board of Health, they're all getting it, I'm going through the same spiel. And I guess the only thing that may save time and effort would be, you know, when an applicant like this comes in front of you and says, hey, listen, we're only doing this to freeze zoning, don't spend so much time on it, and then you don't spend so much time on it, right? The the right thing to do is to go through the process. So I think in certain circumstances, like if it's Barry, and we're saying this is what we're doing, maybe you don't need to send it to the fire department because you know exactly what the purpose is, but but short of that, your hands are really tied with how this process needs to unfold.
Chris?
I would also think that if if we don't follow the process, someone could object to the freezing of the zoning as a result of not having followed the process, so that only comes to pass when you get to the definitive subdivision plan. The preliminary is kind of just an opportunity for you to comment on what's being proposed. In fact, the preliminary isn't even required. By the time you get to the definitive, if you don't do it properly, then, you know, someone can appeal, and that would, that would not be a good thing. Either for.
Yeah, and just to add to that, I mean, we file preliminary plans, right, peek behind the curtain, because they're much less expensive than doing definitive plans, and you never really know, as I had said, whether the the zoning passes, and if it passes, can you comply with it? So it's that prophylactic to make sure your project can go forward. You gain seven months relatively small dollars in relation to what a definitive plan is, because that's fully engineered real, you know, real money. From an applicant's perspective, if you deny the preliminary plan, doesn't matter, right? Whatever you do, and I've been in front of other municipalities where they deny it, and I say, you know, thank you, we file our definitive plan, and if we comply with all of the requirements, they have to approve it, and so you know, the preliminary plan only matters where you're, how you're kind of stopping or starting the timer of what the applicable zoning is. I think I got a basketball daughter upstairs is what's happening, if you can, I don't know if you can hear that.
No, no, we can't hear that. Isn't it probably true that the that this statute was originally probably back in the 50s when people started creating subdivisions? And back when Massachusetts was building a bunch of subdivisions, more than they probably are now, and that was a necessary, freezing the zoning was a necessary part of getting a subdivision built. So over time, the purpose of that statute has sort of flipped on its head to where now it's used mostly to freeze zoning rather than to enable a subdivision.
Yeah, and I'd say it's probably even more recent than that, Doug. The seminal case is Broken Stone versus, I think, Town of Weston. I want to say it's 2000 and something, I can't exactly tell you what the year is. And in that case, the the court determined it's the land shown on the plan which is frozen, right? It doesn't matter what configuration of lots you have, if you've got an 80-lot subdivision or a two-lot subdivision, as long as the land is shown, that's what's frozen. So it occurred, you know, developers have been using that, and now even given technological storming where people will learn about zoning changes or the ability neighbors, because I I can't tell you how many I've done in the past year, because neighbors are getting together to try to propose, once a project's being proposed, they'll try to get together to change the zoning so that the project can't go forward, and we have to file these. So it's almost, I've been, I've been practicing 12 years, the past year, I've seen more freezes than I have, you know, just in that past year than I've seen in the 10 years prior. So people are really looking to use this.
And as we said, it's the only vehicle available to freeze the zoning.
Right.
Okay, Bruce, anything else?
Yeah, that was helpful. It makes me feel like we're actually doing something useful, and I guess I didn't include the applicants because of all the effort and so forth that all the various departments of town have put into this. The applicants probably put as much again. So yes, it does seem to be a awkward process, but I think I'm now at least resigned to to engaging.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
See you next meeting.
Bye.
Got it. Bye bye.
See you next time. Okay, the time now is 7:11. And we will move on to the fourth item on the agenda. So this is the general housing discussion, and we had two subtopics. We'll start with discussion regarding the housing needs assessment. I believe everybody got that with the packet. Chris, do you want to introduce?
Yeah, I don't know if Nate sent you any written material about this other than the document itself, but essentially we are undergoing a process of doing a new housing production plan, and the last housing production plan we had was done in 2013. So we've hired Judy Barrett and her firm, Barrett Consulting, I think it's called, to prepare the housing production plan for us, and what that does is it provides us with the mechanism to set goals for what we want to do in terms of building affordable housing. If we set our goals properly and the and the state approves the housing production plan, it can give us a certain amount of protection from unfriendly 40Bs or unfriendly comprehensive permits coming into town. I don't want to go into all the machinations about that, but it's it's also a worthwhile thing to do from the standpoint of assessing what in fact are your housing needs, and then there's often a, you know, a box on an application, a grant application form that says, do you have a, you know, certified housing production plan? What's your status as far as that goes? So that's a box that we can check if we go through this process. So I think it's a very important process to go through. The housing needs assessment is one chapter in the housing production plan. If you're interested in what a whole housing production plan looks like, you can go back to our website and look at the one that was done in 2013. I'm sure it's, there's some link to it on the planning board website, but if you need the exact link, I can send it to you. Nate would essentially like board members to look through the needs assessment, and if you have any comments or questions, if you think something doesn't sound right or you think it's been misrepresented, or you really want to make a comment about it, he'd like you to send him your written comments, and then he will forward those to the consultant. Certainly, if the board wants to discuss the housing needs assessment tonight among yourselves, you're welcome to do that. But the the essential thing is to bring it to your attention, to ask you to look at it and send in any comments that you have. I've already sent my comments to Nate, and I think members of the probably the Housing Subcommittee has looked at this, I'm going to guess, and the Amherst, what is it called? Affordable Housing Trust? I can't remember the whole name of that group, but anyway, they've they've already engaged in this process, so please send your comments to Nate, and if you want to talk about it tonight with Mr. Marshall's permission, go ahead.
Okay, thanks, Pam, or Chris, rather. Jesse, go ahead.
Thanks. Thanks, Chris. That was actually really helpful. I hadn't heard the purpose described in that way, and it raises another question for me so that I can read it again and think about it this way. So so I sent Nate a general comment already, and which was most of the data that's presented, it's very thorough, it's great, certainly the way I think about things, but most of it doesn't attempt to separate what we suspect or what we know are student homes, however you want to call them, versus none. And so relative to what you just told us, in particular, and I could be totally wrong with this, but but the the graphs about income levels in different houses, I think are look very different because of the sheer number of student homes with zero income, right? And so what are the consequences of us including that in this plan we're making? If we're saying we have, it was it was a huge number of, you know, households under rental stress or whatever the term was. And so is that a bad thing? If it's way over, if it's mostly because of students and not permanent residents? Is that going to allow someone to come in, as you say, and say, oh, look, you have this huge percentage of need, we're going to build lots of dense affordable housing, or is that not how it's used? I just don't know, so.
It's not used that way. No, we are currently at something like 11.75% affordable housing, and we're constantly adding to the numbers of affordable units that we have. We're adding to them by the press, the project that's being reviewed currently by the Zoning Board of Appeals, you know, that Wayfinders is doing, and we're always looking for more. There's another housing project that's coming along at the the VFW, and then, of course, Barry Roberts is going to be including affordable housing in his new development, so there's there's a constant inflow as a result of the energy that the town puts into this topic. So I don't think we're going to run the risk of falling below 10% anytime soon. And your question was, can someone use this report against us by saying you have to provide more affordable units because there's such a great need? Well, that's kind of a theoretical thing, but it doesn't have any doesn't have any teeth. There's no legal ramification to that.
Okay, and then I'll just follow up the actual comment I made to Nate was I was wondering if they could try and sort something out for us? If they have all the data from the census, from, they have all the data from somewhere. And I asked, there were there were specific figures, I was hoping they could try and break it out by population. Stuff like that.
It's a tough one. I can certainly ask Nate if he can get the.
I sent it to him already, I'll send him some more details.
Okay, yeah, he's the one who's, he and Greg Rochaine are the ones who are really dealing with the consultant, you know, on a detailed basis. So as long as he has your question and Greg has your question, that's, they can funnel that to the consultant.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Jesse. Fred?
Yeah, I want to follow up on something Nate said. I I've heard different responses to this question, and that is to what extent, if any extent, is so-called student homes considered to be low-income for the purpose of you know, the town's position on this? I just it's 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 clear that the Amherst is in a kind of unique position relative to the pressures of student housing, and I would hate to see, but I'm not clear on the extent of the actual legal threat of people. And I'm aware of a, actually, it's actually an ADU that has that has been permitted in the RG zoning district that the owner has been very clear is going to contain students, and it has the neighborhood in alarm and because of the the rental structure that's going to be involved with it. So yeah, I'm, it's it's not clear to me in this, in the production plan where that would fall.
Chris, do you have any thoughts on that?
Yeah, the goal of the housing production plan is to raise the number of housing units that are allowed to be listed on the subsidized housing inventory, and they have very strict rules about that. In order to be listed on the subsidized housing inventory, the unit has to be available to those making 80% or less of area median income, and they're not supposed to be students. And they have to be put on the housing inventory by the state, so they have to have, you know, all the requirements of being affordable units, and they have to have gone through, you know, the lottery to fill the to fill the units, and they have to make sure people are income-eligible, and there's a whole train of things that are looked at and boxes that are checked off to make sure that these units are indeed eligible to be listed. Now, you know, there are occasions where you have a development such as Rolling Green, which has, you know, 200 units overall, and I think it's 40%, 40 of those units are actually available to those making 80% or or less, but because of the way the state law is written, all 200 units are able to be counted on the inventory, but that's something that is allowed by state law. So I I think that Fred's question with regard to, you know, are we going to have greater numbers of affordable units as a as a result of having more students in town, isn't really the case, because those units can't be counted on the housing inventory. They don't, they're not income-restricted.
Okay, Fred?
Thank you, Chris. That that's kind of what I thought going into this, but then I'd heard some conversation that was to the contrary, and I really wanted to nail it down. Thank you.
Okay. All right. All right. So I don't see any more hands from the board. We've gotten the request from Chris to send our comments to Nate. And it sounds like we're a little more educated about the context for this, for the review of this. The goals or the this review of the demand that exists in Amherst. Bruce?
Just for the record, I also, like Jesse, have sent an email of comments and an attachment to Nate. And Jesse, I just forwarded them to you as well independently because I I think you would be be helpful to you and me.
Okay. All right, next item, discussion of a potential overlay for existing apartment complexes. So we have some material in the in the packet for that as well. Chris, you want to give us an overview of why you included, what was it, what was sent?
Well, this is a topic that came up a long time ago, back in two thousand and thirteen. And Jonathan Tucker put together this packet to discuss with the planning board. And the idea was that we had all of these already developed housing developments such as Rolling Green and Colonial Village and the housing developments along East Hadley Road. And there were some up in North Amherst such as Brandywine and Townhouse, et cetera, et cetera. So those are all, when they were built, they were permitted in the zoning district in which they were built. But then the town changed the zoning to make them no longer allowed there. So they became non-conforming. But they're already developed. And one of the ideas that came out of the housing production plan that was done in two thousand and thirteen was we had it done by RKG Associates, which was another consulting firm. And they suggested that we could look at our places that are already developed for apartment complexes and see if there's a way of changing the zoning either through an overlay mechanism or something like that to allow those places to become denser. So that was an idea that was, you know, kind of like went off in our heads like a light bulb. And Jonathan Tucker took off with it and and came up with the proposal that you have in your packet. He also has an explanation of what the existing apartment complexes were at that time and the ones that could be potentially made more dense. Since then, since we have a new a new building commissioner, who's very great, I think. He he is on board with the idea of using the special permit process and using section nine point two two of the zoning bylaw, which deals with nonconformities. And the way to, you know, create new housing can be to take something that is already nonconforming, like these apartment complexes are, and be able to, under section nine point two two, to add to the nonconformity. In other words, expand those uses as long as you can make a finding that it's more not more detrimental to the neighborhood. So this mechanism has been used in a couple of instances. For instance, there's the Presidential Apartments on North Pleasant Street. They already were developed back in the seventies, I think, and they were pretty dense. But then there was a piece of land that was out on the western end of that property. And the owner of that property was actually Alan Cohn, who also owns Colonial Village, came up with the idea of using the nine point two two nonconformity section of the zoning bylaw and adding, I think he added nine buildings, each of which have six units in them. So he added fifty four units to the site under a special permit, allowing an expansion of a nonconforming use. So that was one instance. Another instance was development along East Hadley Road. It was either the Boulders or South Point. I can't remember which. And they already had a nonconforming housing development there. And they added a an apartment building with forty seven units, I think it was, under this special permit using nine point two two. So that's a mechanism that we have found that has worked. But the question that we're asking the planning board to think about, and you know, you're not going to resolve it tonight. You might want to talk about it a little bit tonight, but for another, another time, another meeting is, do you think it would be worthwhile to have an easier mechanism to make these developments that already exist more dense? In in other words, you wouldn't have the applicant go through a special permit process which could be denied. You would potentially have him go through a site plan review process. I'm not sure exactly what Jonathan Tucker's draft says. But the idea currently is, is there a process that could be easier than the special permit process to allow these things to occur? And it would be sort of like the overlay, the mixed-use overlay that you are developing along University Drive. Although that property is not currently developed for housing, but it's a redevelopment of property that is already developed. So anyway, think about that. Is this something that you want us to explore? Or would you prefer to have future developers continue to use the mechanism of the special permit using section nine point two two for nonconforming properties? So I don't know if that's something you want to discuss now, but I think Jonathan also gave you, or Nate, gave you with the material that Jonathan had developed for this, and it has maps showing where some of these properties are. And I think it has a draft, a very unfinished draft of a text that could be used. So that's
All right, I see two hands. Fred?
Two things. One is, I seem to remember reading somewhere that current ownership of these complexes threw cold water all over any attempt that they might pursue, it might be thinking of pursuing toward increasing, further increasing density. And of course, if they're not willing to entertain it, then it's not going to move forward. The other, the other thing I wanted to put out there, however, is that I I do think that the process is better than the special permit process. Because we can write
Which process?
The process of the, an overlay. Because then we would be setting uniform requirements that could be applied to this. You know, as Chris went through the apartment complexes that had used this, some of those have not really turned out positively. You know, next, next, the the complex next to the Boulders, or what was the Boulders, is generally, has a slang title to it applied, I think, throughout town as gunpoint. And so I I think that that has not always worked out well, and we might be able to craft something better as an overlay. So that's thinking both both ways on this. But anyway, it's it's an interesting proposal.
Chris, you want to comment at all on that?
Yeah, I understand Fred's idea about what is being talked about out in the neighborhoods, that the developers or the owners of the properties don't want to do this. Well, we suggested it to some owners. But what they don't want to do is lose income for years in order to do something. So say Colonial Village wanted to take advantage of an overlay. And they would have to, I mean, they wouldn't have to, but they essentially would set set aside all of the tenants who are there now, find other places for them to live or have them find their own places. And, you know, redevelop the whole site. They could do it in phases. But owners who are already, you know, reaping the benefit of income, which is pretty substantial, don't want to, you know, shut their property down, have to go through a two-year, you know, permitting and develop development building process, and then have the property, you know, come back online again. It's possible if they did it in phases, they might be willing to do it. But I have I have heard that that is an issue. They don't want to be without two years' worth of income. On the other hand, well, this goes along with that comment. The RKG consultants have told us that in order to make this worthwhile for property owners, you'd probably need to give them a benefit of a three to five times density. So in other words, a property that has a hundred units on it now, you'd either want to give them three hundred or five hundred units as a final result in order to make it worthwhile for them to go through the development process and lose essentially two years' worth of income. So that's all I wanted to say.
Yeah, I guess it seemed like if we had a sufficient latitude to increase the density, it would it would be worthwhile to to take that short-term hit. Jesse?
Thanks. Yeah, so looking at the the map that you provided and also read through the text, I mean, there's already a pretty substantial block of these developments, right? And I was trying to think of what's the downside of making a new overlay? And saying, yes, you can triple your density, whatever that whatever shape that takes. Obviously, there's neighbor concerns. There are some neighborhoods nearby. But from the town perspective, are there other downsides? Maybe Chris or Doug or anyone else want to comment on that? And to let the developers
I'll defer to Chris. You know, I mean, I have another comment on this. But Chris, do you have anything about that? Do you want to offer?
Let me add one more thought, which is, to me, rather than the special permit or the expanding of the nonconformity, it signals to developers, yes, we want you to do this. We're interested in more density here. So you be creative and figure out how to do it, right? That's what we keep talking about with University Drive also. So to me, that's a just a big plus. And if they don't want to do it, they don't do it. So what's the harm? Yeah, that's what I'm trying to think about. What are the other harms I'm not thinking of?
Yeah, I'm not thinking of any downsides to this because we do need more housing. And these are places that are already developed. And, you know, it's not like we're going out on Bay Road and taking a farm and creating something out there. It's it's already, you know, has traffic, has connections to the sewer and water. It's, you know, probably close to other development that is, well, like south, along East Hadley Road, there's a lot of development all right together. And so it's not scattering development throughout town. So it, to us, it seems like a good thing. But I'm sure, you know, there would be other comments on the part of residents that wouldn't, you know, agree with that.
Yeah, I guess the one, Bruce, I'll call you on you in a moment. One thing that I would, or our comment I'd make is that I think I wouldn't treat all of these as shown in these several maps that you included in the packet. I wouldn't treat them all uniformly. You know, the the sort of cluster that's north of UMass would would be one, one treatment. The the Colonial Village folks and the people along Route Nine in the east part of town, maybe I'd treat that differently. Maybe I'd want to have some mixed use down there that was, you know, creating more commercial and vibrancy in that neighborhood. So that would, that's the the main thing that I would comment at the moment. Generally, I think it's a good idea. I mean, you all know, I think I we should have more housing in town. So, yeah, of course, bring it on. So Bruce?
I think it's a good idea, too. I'm, I guess, thinking particularly of North Amherst because that's where I live. And and that's where I'm imagining how people might respond. I know that if, and I can see Chris, Chris's, Chris's comment was helpful, that they're our consultants or our consultants of ten years ago with the previous housing production plan indicated apparently that a density increase of a considerable, you know, a threefold, as you say, density increase would be necessary to to trigger. It would be, you know, to basically achieve escape velocity or to catalyze this thing. The fact that we've got up in North Amherst like four of these together, and one of them, the university, has just recently redone it. So that you could say perhaps they would be very unlikely to, in in the short term or even in the midterm, to pull it all down and do it again. But nonetheless, people will see five of these large apartment areas running from Presidential Apartments all the way down to Townhouse on Meadow Street and already thinking that the Barney blowouts and so forth associated with Hobart Lane is enough to create crowds and the idea of a density allowance necessarily to get, you know, the developers off the pot would be a threefold. I can just imagine the the creative imaginations and fear mongering that would be around that. So I think there would have to be some fairly careful and thoughtful process around there. Doug's thoughts are more or less where I'm headed. What else could you do? How could you make this work? We do need housing. I think that the, this would be something that one hopes that the RG districts would be interested in because it might take the pressure off. That's what we're talking about University Drive doing. This would be more of the same. It's these places, certainly North Amherst is in a very good place relative to the housing need, which is for student housing. So I think that it is appropriate, us as a responsible agents, to open this up and to do our best to foster an intelligent, thoughtful conversation around this topic and to see what can be done that would improve things and to be, listen like crazy, be as creative as we can and then think what kind of overlay could be crafted that would create the, achieve the goals that we're talking about and assuage the anxieties, which I can pretty much be certain would be manifest in North Amherst. But I think it's something that we should we should tackle.
Two other thoughts. One is, Chris, you know, if we head in this direction, we might want to get some input from the town engineer or public works about the adequacy of the, particularly the sewage system to triple that density because that's a lot of additional waste. You know, so that we understand a little bit about the implications for town infrastructure expenditures that would be required. And I guess the other thing I'll say is that these areas where there already is multifamily housing and it's predominantly students feel like kind of the next lowest hanging fruit to me with University Drive being the lowest. You know, in that they're probably the least likely to arouse both syphera subjections to increasing the density. You know, but if we don't, if we don't take advantage of this, then then we have to pick something that's, you know, metaphorically even higher fruit. And that's, you know, it's either undeveloped land or it's developed land that has occupants on it and neighbors. And you know, that's just a little more of a challenge. And, you know, we may get there, but it'll be a little bit, it'll be more of an uphill battle. So Chris, given the comments you've heard, okay, Jesse, maybe there's more coming.
Just to let those of you not on the Subcommittee know, this is our main topic for next week's Subcommittee meeting. If anybody wants to join, I will email the details of when, or it should be posted tomorrow, I guess. Yeah, that's all.
Okay. All right. So I think, Chris, I think the takeaway is there's support on the board. So I think, Chris, I think the takeaway is there's support on the board to, to do this. You know, you could come to us with a proposal probably at every meeting and we might agree that that's a good thing to do. So be careful what you ask for and maybe if you and Nate can huddle and kind of give us a sense of when do you think you could bring this back? Is it something that might happen this spring or is it something that's, you know, before the end of this current calendar year?
I had the feeling that Nate was interested in bringing it back relatively soon, if there was a constant reception for it tonight. Yep.
Okay, good. Okay, Jesse, you've got your hand up again?
Sorry, one more quick comment. I totally agree with you, Doug, about treating the areas separately. And so that's a way to me where I can imagine at least one piece could come relatively quickly, I would hope. If we don't try and do it all at once, but we can have more discussion about that.
Okay. Time is seven forty-four. I think we've gotten through the bulk of our substantive agenda. And we have only the sort of boilerplate, regular administrative things left, I think. Would people like to continue and just see if we can finish this up in the next forty-five minutes or so? Or, or should we take a break? Those in favor of continuing, just raise your hand. Give me a informal here. Okay, that's unanimous. All right, great. Okay, we'll keep going. Next item on the agenda and time, yes, is seven forty-four. Old business not reasonably anticipated. Pam, do we have any?
No, not that I'm aware of.
All right. How about new business?
No, not that I'm aware of. I'm not aware-
Okay, Form A and R subdivision applications.
No, we don't have any this time, but I do expect that we will have one at our next meeting on the twenty-second.
Okay. How about upcoming ZBA applications? Anything we might want to hear about in advance?
Chris, I haven't gotten any transmittals and you're working a little more closely with ZBA. Do you have anything that you want to share?
No, although I think it's possible that we're going to get an application from Colonial Village relatively soon.
Okay.
All right. Upcoming SPP, SPR, SUB applications.
No.
All quiet. Okay. All right, moving on to the planning, to committee and liaison reports. Bruce, anything on PVPC?
Nothing to report, no meeting.
All right. Jesse, anything on housing subcommittee?
Uh, nothing else. We'll, we'll meet next week.
All right. Can I ask you about the minutes?
Yep, there'll be a couple sets approved or hopefully approved at next meeting.
And you're kind of keeping up at this point?
Yes.
Or mostly caught up?
Yes, I think there's one that will still be outstanding, but we're getting there.
Okay, all right. And Karen is not here to report on DRB. Chris or Pam, do you know anything about DRB that you could, would want to share or not?
I do not. I'm not sure that they have met since the last time Karen reported. Their liaison was away.
I think working on new standards and criteria. And that's something that Jacinta has been working on with them. So that's probably something that she'll be talking about soon.
Okay. Fred, I see your hand.
Yeah, this is actually back on upcoming ZBA applications. I happen to know about this because I'm within three hundred feet and I got a notice. But this is in regard to eighty-five North Whitney Street, the building down by the railroad tracks. And there is a ZBA application for a special permit to change a, a commercial space into a dwelling unit down there. And what reminded me of this was the historical commission mention. And I just, I don't think this is really a, a planning board issue at this point, but I did want to just say something about it. This building, I don't know how many of you are aware that this particular parcel used to be one of, I think it was two parcels in the town of Amherst that actually were zoned industrial. And it has historical significance because this was a factory. It was actually industrial. It sits right next to the railroad tracks. There's a passing sighting on those tracks and that's not an accident. And in the late eighteen hundreds, this was a factory that made women's hats. And you ask anyone that's been in town a long time about the hat factory, this is it. And I happen to know quite a bit about this because the the work that was, is being done there, I, many, this is now probably thirty years ago, but I actually wired part of this to be, it was an industrial wiring. It was Militech. Some professors in the UMass Physics Department decided to do what faculty members often do, which is to monetarize their research. And this, this is where that business started and in the hat factory. So I just wanted to mention that. I don't, I don't know if it's a historical, Karen is not here. I don't, I don't know whether this is in that bailiff wick at this point or not, but I just wanted to mention this. We did, as a planning board responsible for the ZBA, we actually did at one point have a, an industrial zoning district. It had two parcels in it and this was one of them. So anyway, thought you might be interested.
Well, Fred, you, you piqued my curiosity. Where was the other parcel?
That's, I'm trying to, I've been trying to remember that and I, and I, I don't remember. It was, neither of these were very large, but, but anyway, yeah.
Well, I, I guess I've heard that up, up at the north, in North Amherst, there was a lot of industrial, early industrial building and activity, kind of in the Puffers Pond area. And that all, many of those buildings were torn down and that probably all happened before there was even zoning in town. You, you are muted, Fred. Fred, you're muted. Fred, we can't hear you. You're muted.
Sorry about that. Yeah. Kohl's Lumber was in a functioning sawmill for a very long time until, you know, I don't know, thirty years ago. I remember when I was electrical inspector back, back then. I remember actually doing some electrical inspections at that location when it was a lumber mill.
Okay, all right. Well, thanks for sharing that. I, I know the building you're talking about that, I guess this was a hat factory. Okay, let's see, we were up to report of chair. Your chair does not have a report for tonight, so we can move on to report of staff. Chris or Pam, anything to report? How is your, how's your staff? How's your headcount? Have you filled all your positions or are you still short?
Well, we're, we're so lucky to have Chris with us here tonight.
Oh, yeah, well, we're looking for a planning director and the reason I'm here tonight is because Pam and I decided to give Nate a night off. Actually, he had something to do with his child. I think he had to drive his child to a sports event. So we said, we can handle it for you, Nate, and here we are.
Okay. All right, so you, we, we need a new director. In terms of your junior planners, are you, are you fully hired at this point or do you still have vacancies?
We are fully hired. Walker Powell, I don't know if you met her, but I think she, she has been an attendee at several of your meetings. She may even be here tonight.
She is here tonight.
And she is really great. She's very smart. She does her work really fast. And she has a degree from Smith College as well as from the Conway School of Landscape Design and she worked in the City of Orange for, I think, three years. And then I believe, have you met Jacinta Williams, who came to work with us in May? And she's working with the Zoning Board of Appeals. She has her education from, I think it's the University of UCLA in planning and she's worked for Piney Valley Planning Commission and for the City of Pittsfield. And she's working for the ZBA as well as for Design Review Board and one other, local Historic District Commission. So she really has played full. But we're so grateful to have those two additions to our planning staff. Thanks for asking about that.
Good. Glad to hear you're at full strength. Except a director. Okay, time is seven fifty-four. We powered through the rest of the agenda quickly. If anybody has anything else to say tonight, speak now. All right, I guess we are adjourned. We will meet again on the twenty-second on January.
Thank you.
All right, good night.
Thank you all.
Hi, bye, Chris.
Bye.
Pam and or Doug, can I ask you procedural questions about subcommittee or is this the wrong space to do that?
Well done, let me.
Can we stop recording? I mean, it doesn't matter, but-
I hope we were. I was going to say, I hope we were recording.
We're still recording. Do you want me to pause it or, or stop it?